Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Commission Daughter. The date is Wednesday, December 6th. The time is 7:01 PM. Will you join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eileen McKean.
Jim Vitale.
David Parent.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay, going on to the consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? Any corrections? Any amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Coaches Commission minutes of the regular meeting be of November 1st, 2017, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Most made in second, any discussion? A call for a vote. Ellie?
Yay.
Dave?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Going on to old business. This is application A 17 10.2 291 Hall Avenue, Community Lake Park. Tree thinning and vegetation removal.
Report went out to you in your packet. First packet. I sent two packets out. Did everyone get the two? Yeah, okay, good. Anyway, so they've requested to table it. What they're looking at, the Parks and Recreation Department, is looking at sprucing up the edge of Community Lake, which is very vegetated, and they want to manicure it a bit, not too much, I hope, but I said, listen, let's do a plan. Right now, there's nothing on paper. Let's put it on paper. Exactly what trees do you want to remove? What erosion control are you going to do? How close to the water do you want to go? Are you going to do any benches? Things like that. So I'm going to work with them and the engineering department and cook up some plans for next time. So they asked to be tabled.
Engineering or we would work with records department?
Well, no, but engineering does the maps. So they will do a map for Park and Recreation Commission.
Would they be putting it out to bid or would Public Works be doing the work? You don't know yet.
No, I do know. They did some work there already and they used an outside contractor. So I imagine they would use the outside contractor.
Okay, old business, again, application A 17. Well, they're requesting table. We don't have to act on it then tonight.
Oh, not, no, number two is not.
No, number, I'm still on number one. I didn't.
Oh, yes.
They asked a request for table.
Yes.
We don't have to act on that.
You just say it's tabled.
We're going to table it until next meeting. Okay, going on to item two. Application A 17 10.3 530 Church Street, Timberwood Homes. Clearing and gratings on lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. This is the Shearnick property going up 68?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Church Street, Yalesville.
Yes, and this went out in the second packet, my environmental planners report, and I said I would. What they want to do is they want to, they were approved last April and we thought, we had a lot of discussion about where that encroachment line was. There's a pond, we're talking about on the west side of the property, there's a pond northwest. It's a lovely little pond surrounded by a lot of vegetation and a lot of thought went into where the commission would allow the encroachment to go. Anyway, so they're coming back in because the folks that are looking at the houses there, and there's like five houses, pretty much like almost complete, under construction of the seven, there's seven lots. The folks that are looking at the houses want, of course, a bigger backyard. We hear this all the time. One of the lots, lots number three, wants a bigger backyard and also wants a pool. And so it presents a problem because things are pretty tight there. So the application is to encroach further into, toward the wetland on lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. Now, you got the application at the last meeting. So I handed it out at November, the actual application, and this is the environmental planners report. And what I had asked him to do was, I went out there, it's kind of confusing because they ripped up the silt fence, they put it back again in a different place, in some places they've been doing some grading, they took down some trees. They changed the building. In other words, the buildings that were approved in April are just conceptual houses. So people come in with different shape houses that they want. So the house shapes have changed. So I took the building department, building application out there as my guide, and it was still confusing. So then I asked the developer if he would go out and have his project engineer stake the proposed limit of encroachment so I really would understand how far back, because it's not uniform. He's going back some, he wants to go back further on some lots than others. It was very confusing. He declined to spend the money to do so. And so I asked him to meet me out there and he was kind of very busy this week. So I went out there, I spent a long time out there. I have photographs I could show you. Really what I'm leading to is I don't mind what he was asking for on lot 1. I don't really, not terribly concerned with what he's asking for on lot 2, but on lots 3 and 4, for me, I would recommend a no-go on lot 3 and 4 because the pond, I feel there already with the initial approved encroachment from last April, that they're already pretty close to that pond. Would you like me to pass the photographs on such? What I want to say is I have here copies of the original approval of those lots, what it looked like, what he came in for the building permit drawings, and then he changed it, then he amended that map again for this application. So there's three different maps. That's one reason it was so confusing. And what I'm leading up to is I think a sidewalk is in order. That's going to be their debt?
Yep.
And which one wanted a pool?
It's lot 3.
We have some drainage coming out too, some perimeter drains. I see F circled on lot 3.
Yes, back in, oh, maybe September, October, Mr. Minieri came in, he wanted to extend that footing drain another 30 feet. And I said, well, if you extended another 30 feet, you're into the wetlands. And he says, okay. So I said, no, you can't just go do that because he's going to make a path. We went out there with his site contractor. He showed me he was going to make a path 30 feet long, eight feet wide down to the pond water for his footing drain. And I said, well, you need a permit for this, and I don't know if you're going to get it. Can't you put it back, push it back up the hill? And he says, no, we can't. What, it's got a daylight, whatever. Anyway, so then he didn't apply for his permit and I asked him two weeks later, in time for the last meeting, well, you know, your deadline's today, you didn't apply, you better apply. And he goes, oh, I don't need a permit anymore. I don't need it. Don't worry about it, he says. Don't worry about it. Anyway, he put it in. He put it in without the permit.
Oh.
And so there it is. It is about 15 feet. I measured it today. It looks closer, but it is 15 feet down a slope. So if, you know, the water would travel down the slope. It looks like the water would discharge onto the neighbor's lot. So that's another thing I've got to clarify. You're not allowed to discharge stormwater onto your neighbor's property. So that's, they've got to cut that pipe back a little bit anyway for that aspect. Anyway, this pool, I mean, it really takes an inspection of those three different site plans I gave you, so it's kind of tedious. But this pool, the pool is the problem, really. I mean, it's one of the problems. I understand, people want a pool. I was fiddling around with turning the pool, maybe if the pool is turned the other way, the long way instead of this way. But then because of the way the lots, as Mr. Chairman, you pointed out, the lots are up higher than they used to be. In other words, they raised those houses. So the, they have, there's a swale that's proposed in back, a 15-foot wide clearing for a swale to bring the water around all those lots down into the big storm basin. Bring it all around like that, which was fine. We knew about that back when, but now they want to put a pool there. So if you're going to put a pool there, you've got to move your swale back toward the pond. And so it's, it's kind of confusing to understand. If you're out there, you can see, it's much better to see what's going on if you're standing there.
Well, when I came through there and then I called Aaron right after, I looked, I didn't go in and go on the site, but all I could picture was similar to what we had up at Chimney Hill. I don't know that subdivision.
Royal Oaks, it's called now.
Royal Oak, which they cut the Royal Oak downs, so.
Yeah, they got, they got one, two left, two out of eight.
But what they, one of the problems was there was, they were filling up around it. I mean, the grade of the new lot brought it up, I think the base of the Royal Oak was probably six, eight feet below the grade around it. And that's kind of what I saw, what I thought I saw going on on here, that if they're going to extend back into the upland review area, it wasn't a case of cleaning off what was there, taking out the underbrush. I could visualize they want to bring a flat backyard up. And if you're going to bring a flat backyard up, I think that turns around and defeats our protection of the wetlands with that buffer. That buffer should stay pretty natural. So I think in this case, I don't know when, how it works in everybody's schedule, but I don't think it's a bad idea to get a site investigation out there. But they're, they don't want to wait until January to get an answer on this grading in the backyard, or they don't care because they're probably not putting the lawn in until springtime.
I don't know the answer to that question. I do know that they cannot get, that the planning and zoning put a special restriction on these lots, that they can't be sold until he posts a bond for the road. He hasn't done that yet. That's like $200,000, hasn't done it yet, so. So he cannot, there's a restriction. He is prohibited from selling these lots. So originally, he had a closing in middle of December, but he can't do that until he posts the bond. That's all I know.
Well, when you don't have enough daylight to do it at the end of the day for a site investigation, or what's the earliest everybody could be at a site investigation? Who would be the, 5 o'clock dark?
5:00 dark, yeah.
Yeah, Mike? Depends, it just doesn't.
So we.
I'm going to Fridays. I can do any time on Fridays.
I can do Friday afternoon.
And you can get during the daylight, I mean, it'd be.
Yeah, no, I mean, you can do it.
Debbie, you're just along with the problem. Saturday's not an impossible day for me either. It's just, I don't, possibly not this Saturday. So I think Nick's time is flexible during the day. What are you suggesting for a site investigation?
My Friday is open. I could come on the weekend. I mean, do we want to make sure the developer's there for the walk?
Okay, can we leave it open? We agreed to have a site investigation. Can we leave it open and coordinate a time during the period? Do you have any time off between Christmas and New Year's?
I have the week before Christmas.
Off completely. So that might be a candidate for during the day, week before Christmas. Okay with that date?
Sounds like a plan to me.
All right, but it's got to be a Friday.
Fridays, I always have Fridays off of work, so I'm good on Fridays.
I'm good on Fridays.
Throw it in the 22nd. Uh-oh, I hear a, I hear a ah.
That's going to be a tough one for me.
Well, we could do it, I mean, I could, I could call him tomorrow, the developer. We could do it this Friday. We have to post it 24 hours to post.
That's fine for this.
But not fine for Debbie.
Not for, no, Frank, Debbie, not for Debbie.
No, it's not for Debbie.
Yeah, the 15th.
Or I could take Debbie out. We could go out some other day. I don't know.
Why don't you see what Saturday is available? And I don't, and I think you've got to be after Christmas.
Okay, I'm good. You mean between everybody and the developer? I'm good any Saturday.
Well, I may not be good this Saturday, but then what's the next Saturday? This is, this Saturday is the.
Next Saturday, this Saturday is the 9th, the next is the 16th, and then there's the 23rd.
Okay, 23rd would be out. So you're looking at the 16th. That would be the Saturday that would work. See what he's available for the 16th.
And what time were you thinking?
9:30.
9:30?
On 9:30?
Yeah, make sure we get our breakfast.
Okay, you want to try for that? And I'm not sure he needs to be there, but it would be in his best interest to be there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Moving on to new business, application D 17 11.1 7690 South Turnpike Road, Adam Landing Property Development. Okay, wants a request for determination of regulated activity regarding proposed re-subdivision under section 7.2.
All right, this, if you notice the D, it's a D, it's not an A, because it's a request for determination. So just like when we do the farm permits, they get a D too. So this is a request because under this, under section 7.2, it says when somebody comes to the plant, wants to go to planning and zoning with a subdivision, re-subdivision, they have to check with Wetlands first to see if they have to come to them. So this is the step. So if, this is the step he's trying to do. So typically, this would be acted on tonight. He has asked to be tabled. I could bring, and he didn't give, when you do a request, you don't need to bring eight copies or seven copies. He did submit one copy, I can show it to you, but he has asked to be tabled.
Okay, but why don't you just say, what's, what is the relative of activity? Is he's changing the activity or is it just a re-subdivision? Is there anything changing what he's doing?
This lot today, this piece of property today, has two lots. The southern lot is where that building is.
Yep.
He's not going to do anything there. What he's proposing on doing is taking the two lots, making it into three lots. So he's massaging it, it's going to, he wants it to end up with three lots.
Is anything changing regarding wetland impacts?
Well, in my environmental planners report, I told, I go on how it gets confusing because he's not quite done with the regulated activities that we approved for him in June. He's got, so he says, listen, instead of getting it all complicated, I'll finish them. So he's trying, right now, like Matt, he's out there finishing them so he can get them finished before planning and zoning would approve the re-subdivision. So it's all tidy and finished. That's what he's trying to do right now, get it done by the January meeting.
Okay.
But the next one, where he wants to take that, the northern part and split it into two lots, how it works is we would just, the commission would just say, there are no regulated activities today to be approved. However, because I checked with the law department, you put a clause in there, however, there are a lot of wetlands and there is a river on this property, so there are likely to be regulated activities if this property were to be developed in the future. That's how we cover ourselves.
Okay, all right. So what I'm gathering is he's going to subdivide a piece of property, but he has no site plan for that property yet.
Well, he doesn't, well, he has no real site plan. He has a conceptual.
Has a conceptual. And the conceptual site plan has some wetland involvement in it?
Yes.
Wetland, negative wetland impacts or regular, no, excuse me, regulated activities on the conceptual.
Yes, for one, over 20,000 square feet of surfaced area, for one.
So basically, we have no trouble with him subdividing the property, but the new subdivision may or will require, based on a conceptual plan, will require wetland approval? Do you want to, of course, he's tabled it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll let him table it, but I think if you could get some real specific wording for January's meeting, so we're not, we're not searching around the correct way to phrase it.
Yes.
All right, then just have a recommendation of what the correct wording would be for this determination. Okay, going on to second A 17 2.4 7690 Harford, South Harford, South Turnpike Road, Adams Landing Property, requested transfer permit to a new LLC under the name of South Turnpike 2 LLC?
Yes.
Is that what you would say, 2?
Yes.
Okay, which, we have no objection to that.
Yes, actually, he should have done it before, but yes.
Okay, do you need a vote on that?
Yes.
Motion and a vote?
Sure, consent to transfer.
Consent to transfer, Dave?
Adams Landing, and who's this, I don't see the, who's it being transferred to? Oh, who's it being transferred to?
South Turnpike 2 LLC.
Where am I, in the wrong one?
I think we're over here, I think. Adams Landing.
That's Adams Landing here.
It's on twice, yeah.
You're on the wrong page.
Oh, that probably explains why we're having difficulty doing this.
Okay, so your item?
Okay, okay, now I get it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A 17 dash 2.4 slash 7690 South Turnpike Road, Adams Landing Property Development LLC be allowed to transfer the permit to an entity known as South Turnpike 2 LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay, going on to item F, receipt of new applications 68 North, excuse me, A 17 11.1 6 and 8 Northrop Industrial Road West, 1070 North Farms Road. This was a modification to a wetland application A 12 dash 11.2, and this was for administration approval. This was the application that they didn't have any increases in impervious surface, they just rearranged them.
Slight decrease. There was a slight decrease, yeah.
Slight decrease, and we basically okayed it last month based on Aaron's approval of the request. So that has been done. Okay, A 17 11.2 54 Ridgewood Road, Richard Hullett, in addition, request for administration approval. Here again, Aaron and I went over this and there's, oh, this was, this, this addition to the house was being built on the driveway, which was already impervious surface, so there was really nothing, no loss, no gain. It went from tire to roof, pretty much, so that was approved. Election of officers, we don't have a full slate. Contact sheet, item H, I W W C contact sheet revised.
That one out in the packet, yeah. Because Bob Parise, we lost a member. He's resigned.
Bob talked with me and he felt he couldn't, well, he had a different agenda. His agenda wanted to be helping people and this was not, he wasn't well familiar with wetlands and wetland regulations and he thought he would be able to serve Wallingford residents in some other capacity than the wetlands, the commandment. So Bob chose to go to allow someone else to serve that can really get into the protection of wetlands. Okay, reports and communications, the khaki whack there, Newton Habitat.
That went out in the packet.
Conferences, it was in Cromwell. Meeting schedule for the next year and staff report.
Oh, this, yeah, I just want, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the conference, Debbie Phillips, Eileen McKean, and myself were there, and it was great. And I dropped the ball on copying handouts, but Eileen, did you pick up anything that we should copy for the commission? Well, you can think about, if you could get it to me if you did it or?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head that, you know, is all that significant. I grabbed a whole bunch of stuff from all kinds of people.
There were all sorts of displays there, so you got, it was great seeing all the vendors too on your breaks. We got to see all the vendors and their latest erosion control and all sorts of things. But Debbie, I understand you have some handouts and we could get that for next time. Staff report, I handed out a staff report tonight. I hope everyone got one. This follows up on the last staff report, just to see where the sites that are opened up, what kind of condition they're in. The good news, should I go through this?
Well, quickly, I mean.
Okay, good news, 7 Old Gate Road, that was, that, we were working on that violation for a number of years. It's been completed with the help of Commissioner Kern. He went out there and made the final inspection and graced it like, you did enough, this is good. So finally, we can get that off the slate there. I've seen no movement on 8 and 10 Atwater Place, which is problematic. We need to see some movement there. Good news on 1092 Clintonville Road, he's 90% complete with his work there. I checked it Monday, so it's great.
There's progress all the time?
They made a lot of progress there. That's just a single family, private home. It's not a developer and, yeah, they did, they, I had to, I had to get after them, I had to hound them, but they finally came through. Okay, so for the development sites, they're open up. We have Mr. Ricciello, the apartment complex at 103 North Turnpike. There's no issues since he was here last time. He's going to button it up for the winter. He's, he completed his pad, he's not going to start construction until the spring. So I saw him with millings out there today, putting down some millings in the parking lot. Okay. Seventy-six ninety South Turnpike, we talked about that before. There are some engineering issues. I actually sent the chairman a memo that I sent to the engineering department. I need the engineering department's help with a pipe that they put installed in the river, I don't like it, the way it was installed. And I hope that the town engineer can help me resolve that. Okay, five thirty Church Street, we talked about that before, but what I didn't mention, we set the special meeting site investigation. But what I didn't mention is that I saw a lot of erosion control issues out there today. And I'll have to be, it's, the winter is upon us, and, um, the other developers are hydroseating right now. I mean, people typically, if it's, now it's into December, people hydroseed. I don't know, or lay down hay, straw mulch. He's got the whole site opened up there, and you'll see it when he, I hope he gets some hay mills down or something down, because he's got, he's got lots of issues. His silt sacks are full, he's got to get all his silt sacks tended to. And I saw this storm basin is not quite complete, it really confused me, because the homes are going up, they look great, the homes look great. And here, he's got an open end on his site, on his storm basin, I have to get after him on that. Not the easiest developer to work with. Uh, six oh five North Elm Street, uh, he buttoned it up for the winter. Got things hydroseeded out there. Twenty-nine Tully's Road, I have to go look at it, but the good news is that there was erosion, storm water runoff from New Core, which is at thirty-five Tully's Road. And they came in, and they're going to deal with it. So, they're tending to that as we speak. They're dealing with their storm drainage that was spilling onto the FedEx property. So, it's good news for both properties that that is being tended to. I was very pleased with that. No issues at Royal Oaks, that's one ninety-five Chimney Hill Road, no issues out there. Uh, sixty-nine Cheshire Road, well, we do have an issue there. It's, that's a single family, just one house on a construction. He's gone beyond, he's moved the silt fence. He's moved the silt fence over, like, you know, hoping, I guess, that I wouldn't notice maybe. So, I have to, I'm meeting him out there on Friday morning. And we'll see what, you know, and maybe...
Would they say those lepers don't change their spots?
Yeah, yeah.
How about, uh, down the south end of town, DeMartino?
Oh, thank you, thank you, I failed to put it on here. I was there yesterday, because I called the engineer, the project engineer, and he said, guess what, it's done. The owner, Mr. DeMartino, didn't inform the engineer, Dave Carson, but it's done, he did it. Sure enough, I went out yesterday, it's done, took photographs, it's done.
They had a little push. Okay. All right, then we're back to our agenda J, violations. Uh, this is this notice of violation forty-eight Jones Road, J C D Development. Now, when we left last time, he was here denying that he did any involvement in filling wetlands. He did not comment whether he clear-cut an upland review area or not. The engineer for that project, Chris Giuliano, offered to go out and review the project and see if indeed the wetlands looked like they were filled or not. He generated a simple map, I say, and, but what was the outcome of the map, Aaron?
I'm trying to find it.
As I recall, the map indicated that the upland review area was clear-cut. But if any wetlands were filled, there was a very, very, very minute area, it was probably right on the edge of the wetlands, as I recall. Is that correct?
Yes, I meant to bring it tonight, I apologize, but it was a large area of the upland review area. It's, you know, open to the sun and got wood chips on it. And the wetlands, he did not fill the wetlands, but they were, he took all the shrubs around them away and the trees, so now they're open to the sun, so.
There's no erosion control, other than the wood chips going into the wetlands either, now that vegetation's all gone?
Right, but it's flat, it's fairly flat, so I don't see erosion as the problem.
No, but it's just, it wouldn't have been any problem had the upland review areas remained. Now, you requested X number of trees to be planted there?
No, I just suggested in my environmental planners report that, um, that, that's, that, the commission has several options. You could have the owner submit an after-the-fact permit for what he did. You could have him remove some of it, you could have him plant some trees to shade the wetlands.
Well, first of all, the fact that he doesn't seem to think that we're very serious at this issue. I think, number one, we have to maintain that the violation stays in force. Wetlands Commission is requiring this violation to stay in force. And that if there's no cooperation with this gentleman, I think it should be on land records that here's a violation on this property. So, if you can follow through with that, maybe, go ahead, Dave.
I would ask, I mean, at this point, he's, I look at your report and his conduct and everything like that. He seems to be a rather uncooperative person. And I would, it would seem that recording that violation probably would help focus his attention. So that, I mean, I would personally rather see the, let the violation be recorded and as opposed to letting him sell the house, or we're still going, you know, and, you know, we're going to be dragging out this problem for a long time.
Okay, I, in the packet, I did send a copy of the second notice of violation that went out to him, a follow-up letter. I did have a conversation with him, I told him it was in his best interest to show up tonight. I sent him a copy of the survey that Giuliano did. And he isn't here tonight, so. Um, but I, if, yes, you should make a formal vote to affirm the notice of violation, the original notice of violation. Affirm that, and then two, vote, this is from the law department, to vote to, um, to put it, to record it on the land records.
Okay, that's fine. Now, does the law department want us to notify him that we, if not resolved, or something in ten days, we will put this, we'll start, proceed this land records? Or does the law department think we should just go forward and put it on the land records?
Well, it didn't come up about giving a ten-day notice or anything like that. That wasn't discussed.
I think in the motion to be made, that it, uh, have this violation recorded on the land records following the law department's guidance.
Following the law department's guidance as to timing, as to?
The correct procedure to follow would be, well, the timing, what's necessary to be effective.
And then the other vote would be to affirm the original notice of violation.
I think it can be all in one package.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, um, the commission affirm the violation, notice of violation. And, uh, in accordance with procedures set forth by the law department, record the notice of violation on the land records.
That sounds, okay. Okay, motion made, is your second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion?
I guess maybe my brain is, my memory is chiming in. As to some finding, the reason you're recording on the land records is the owner's been unresponsive, or some finding as to why we're going that extra step.
Then, are you saying that the commission should note that the reason why we are taking the step for recording the notice of violation on land records is that the owner has been unresponsive to our requests?
To remediate the problem. Mediate the violation?
Yeah, remediate the violation.
You okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so just to reconfirm, there's the motion that Dave has made, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and second, any other discussion? All for a vote. Eily?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. I think that takes care of our agenda tonight. Now, you, uh, if nothing, we have no new applications, correct? On the agenda, I mean?
Just the request for a determination for that re-subdivision, which has been tabled. That was new, that was new.
Well, I'm just not sure we need a January meeting if anything else comes in.
Well, we have that special meeting out in the field. You're going to want to act on that.
Well, can we act on it on that, at that point? Because if that's the case, you may act on this determination of, request for determination. Why don't you think about it?
I know that one won't be ready till the January meeting, it won't be ready in time. That, the Adams Landing one, won't be ready in time. I believe you cannot act in the field. I could check on that, but the reason is because there's no one recording the conversation? There's no recording of the conversation?
Between who?
On a sidewalk, there's no recording.
Yeah, well. Going back to the Adams Landing site. But we could operate based on the preliminary or this conceptual site plan that they gave.
Oh, yeah, but he's revising his site plan.
I understand, that's fine, and that's fine, all of that's fine. But if we say, yes, you need, if, when you revise your site plan and it has wetlands involvement, it will need an application. It, the fact that it's just a determination situation, I'm not so sure it's as critical as if it was an actual application.
All right, so you want to put it on the special meeting?
Yes, we don't have to act upon it, if things are coming in. But if we act upon it on that special meeting, I mean, I'm just not sure, we need to be here in January if it's down to this small amount of activity.
So, you're saying I should put it on?
Please.
And then he would probably want to show up, the representative?
I would be surprised on just a determination.
Okay, all right.
Because I think we've already came to the assumption here, if the, we could vote on that tonight if he didn't table the request for the application.
Yes.
Because what we're really saying, and you, we're going to get the wording strained out, but it was basically, you're subdividing the property, and we have no, and if you have wetlands issues on it, then you're going to need an application.
Yes, I wasn't going to mention the other sticky wicket. Sticky wicket is that half the property is in the hundred-year flood plain. So, the size of his flood, compensatory flood storage area would be half the property. Like, in other words, it's, he's got a problem.
Well, he knows what he's got, and he's just, this is just determining that you're going to be back before us. I don't see that as a problem, I think that's just, he knows he's going to be before us. And we're pretty much agreeing, yeah, you're going to have to come before us.
He might be moving lines around, we'll see, yeah, okay.
I just don't think this is as big a problem as some of their other issues.
All right, so we'll put it on the special meeting agenda?
Yeah.
And if for some reason it's not ready, it's not ready, but it's on there, it'll be on there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, and then, uh, okay, and what are we looking for? That was a January sixteenth, no, no, December sixteenth? And nine thirty, correct?
Yes. And where are we meeting? We should say we'll meet at the site.
At the site, which is five thirty Church Street Yaleso.
Oh, yes, I send out a flyer to everybody. And do we make it rain or shine? Rain or shine?
I think you're going to have to, if there's a bit of snow, maybe it won't be, but hopefully.
Okay, rain or shine?
Rain or shine, okay. And if there's nothing else to come before us tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?